Good afternoon. This is the regular meeting of the City Council. It is Thursday, January 20th. The meeting of the City Council, the Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. We will have the flag salute. And if you will, be led by our Director of Development, Jeremy Blime.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody, please stand. Ready, begin.
Kristi, may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Downs.
Present.
Councilmember Kite.
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Wile.
Here. The first order of business today will be a presentation by the Riverside County Sheriff's Department and recognition of Lieutenant Wilson and introduction of Lieutenant Myers, if you would, please, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, while they come down. Jason, am I going to be able to share my screen?
Yes, he will, sir.
All right. I can't see the -- oh, there we go. Hey, guys. Thank you for coming in today. First, we'll thank our outgoing lieutenant, Lieutenant Wilson. Lieutenant Wilson has been a fantastic asset to our city. Out of all the years that I've had the pleasure of working with the Sheriff's Department, by far, he was the most responsive lieutenant that we've had at the city of Rancho Mirage. He cared deeply for our community, and that came through in how we approached his work and how we approached concerns and the needs of our community. He is moving on. We are losing him to our neighbor, so he will still be close, but he was selected to rotate into the City of Palm Desert lieutenant after their lieutenant retired. But it's not all bad news. Standing next to him is Lieutenant Sean Myers. Lieutenant Myers was our sergeant here in Rancho Mirage for many years, so it's more of a homecoming for him and for us. But I would like to take a minute just to thank Lieutenant Wilson, and I'm going to just share my screen really quick. Can you guys see my screen?
Yep.
All right. So as I touched on briefly, he oversaw all aspects of the city's law enforcement contract with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. And one of the things that I think Lieutenant Wilson excelled at was enhancing some of our public outreach programs and really utilizing our community service officers and just being in the community and being a resource for the community. We hosted numerous events for the community, Coffee with a Cop. We also focused on our home safety assessments for residents. So through the Sheriff's Department and through the city, for free, any resident can have one of our community service officers come out to their home and give them advice on how they can better protect their homes. Very valuable for our full-time residents, also for our seasonal residents as well. There's very simple things that you can do to protect your property and make it easier to protect your property, and you get to talk directly with the experts and Lieutenant Wilson had a focus on this program for our community. A lot of the issues that we deal with are property crime-related, which kind of gets into the next key projects that he was able to accomplish during his time with us. So under Lieutenant Wilson, we implemented a very robust automated license plate reading program. We did give an overview to the Cove Commission yesterday at their meeting about some of the enhancements to our community that this program has brought. It is a great investigative tool. It gives our officers and deputies that we do have the ability to identify suspects and solve crimes more quickly. This program would not be where it's at without Lieutenant Wilson's help. And then the other key program that we implemented was the Knox Box Safety Program. That basically allows immediate access for our deputies into gated communities. So if there is a gate, no longer will they have to wait to be let into the gate. They now have a system in place where, under emergencies, they can gain immediate access or if someone's in need of service, immediate access. We already had a program like this in place for our ambulance service, but now we've implemented it for our sheriff's service as well. So if a residential alarm goes off in the middle of the night, there's no more waiting for a guard to let us into a gated community. They can gain access immediately through this program. We retrofitted through this program and under the lieutenant's watch over 130 gates within the city with this system. So Lieutenant, a big thank you from all of us at the city. You're going to do great things for the city of Palm Desert like you did here, and we're going to miss you. So I can't hear anyone else. Mayor, before we introduce Lieutenant Sean Myers, do any of the council have anything to say?
I will. Chris, I think we've had chats from time to time over the years. You know how we feel about law enforcement in Rancho Mirage. We consider it a family, and you have been a major part of the family. And we can't thank you enough for all of your dedication. And as Isaiah said, you're not going very far, so we're pleased about that. And likewise, we feel that Sean is coming home. Basically, I still think of Sean as a sergeant, and now he's a lieutenant, and we're very proud of him. So we thank you both very much. Is there anybody else that would like to make any comments? All right. Again, thank you. Isaiah, if you want to make any closing comments?
Yeah, you know, I'll ask Lieutenant Myers to come up and maybe talk a little bit about his background. But before we do, Chris, is there anything that you want to say at the podium?
Hey. Isaiah, Mayor, city leadership, just two words. Thank you. All right, a few more than two, right? From the bottom of my heart, it's been an absolute pleasure serving with the leadership here, with all of your staff, residents of Rancho Mirage. Been absolutely stunning, been a true blessing, and far and away the best tour of service I have had thus far. So that is due to you guys, your leadership, and allowing me to, you know, make all of this possible is a true partnership. So thank you very much, and you're in very, very good hands with Sean. So very pleased to see where it's going. Thank you again.
Well, thank you, Chris, and congratulations.
Ted, if I might say one word or two? Just to thank -- all of our thank yous go to Chris. He has done a remarkable job, as Isaiah pointed out. We get so many compliments for the work he has done and the connection he has created through so many of our residents. It has been a pleasure every step of the way. He has been there, and we can't thank him enough. Thank you again, and we wish you all the very best.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean?
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Four years ago this month, I stood before you with departing words. It was a bittersweet moment for me at that time because I was leaving behind many established friendships and great memories. But with that said, I'm very happy to be back. I look forward to picking up where Chris is leaving off and carrying the mission forward. Like I said, I'm ecstatic to be back, and our partnership that we've established over the years is outstanding, and I look forward to moving that forward. For those that don't know me here, I know most everybody I've worked with. I have 23 years with the Sheriff's Department. I've held every rank up to lieutenant. I've been assigned to various assignments across the county, so I do have a little background. I'm a native of the desert. I have somebody very special to me that resides here in the city of Rancho Mirage, so just know that you'll be in good hands. And again, I look forward to being back.
Thank you, Sean. We're happy to have you back. We feel like, as I say, you've kind of returned to the family here. So thank you, thank you so much. And Chris, again, we wish you nothing but the best. Thank you both.
Thank you.
The next presentation is by the Riverside County Fire Department and Cal Fire. Introduction will be Battalion Chief Coats and Battalion Chief Tierney, if you would, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, staff. Mike Beverlin, West Division Chief. About June of last year, I've promoted from Battalion Chief, working in the Cove community, and now I'm pretty much in charge of the Fire Department for all the Coves and Desert Hot Springs. And what I wanted to do today is introduce you to your two new battalion chiefs, Matt Coats and Pete Tierney. So Pete Tierney is -- lives in the Coachella Valley, lives in Palm Desert, and is an immense leader. His last assignment was at Fire Station 71 in the city of Palm Desert. And prior to making some equipment changes at that location, that was the busiest fire station in all of Riverside County. While Pete was there, he was the captain that was in charge of a fire engine, a medic patrol, and an ambulance, consummate professional, educated, just an outstanding member of the Fire Department and a great leader. And I couldn't be prouder that Pete gets to stay in this battalion and continue to serve the Cove communities. So with that, I'll introduce Battalion Chief Pete Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Obviously, you have a little bit in my background. I've got 22 years with the department. I've actually worked in the city of Rancho Mirage before as a firefighter, before cycling out to Palm Desert. I've been in the desert since '89, so I've been around the Cove communities for a while, and the majority of my career has actually been in the Cove communities. So I'm really looking forward to serving the city of Rancho Mirage and representing the Fire Department for the city of Rancho Mirage. Thank you.
And then, last but not least, Battalion Chief Matthew Coats. Matthew also lives in the Coachella Valley. He is pretty much on the same career path as Chief Tierney. He's worked kind of throughout the desert communities in all the different ranks, from firefighter to engineer to fire captain and now battalion chief. He served in the cities of Norco, he served in the city of La Quinta, and lastly, in the city of Indio. Also, Chief Coats is educated and has been just a consummate professional and, again, a tremendous leader, and I just couldn't be prouder of these two gentlemen taking over for Chief Wyatt and I. And so with that, I'll introduce Chief Coats.
Good afternoon, council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me, and it's an honor to be of service here for the city of Rancho Mirage. I was actually an engineer at Station 50 just down the street, and I remember Mr. Kite was a council member then, believe I met him then. So again, happy to be here, 23 years of service, hopefully to bring my education, my experience to the city of Rancho Mirage. Thank you.
And so with that, I just wanted to make sure that the council and staff know that these two gentlemen are available at your service whenever you need. I'll have them make sure that the contact information that they have will get to you all, and so any event that you need to talk to them, please do. I feel very confident that they're going to do a great job for the city of Rancho Mirage.
Chief, thank you so much. I will say this, that there is hardly a week or days that go by that we don't get compliments about the service that you perform. When you go out on a call and perform your duties with our residents, they just cannot say enough about your professionalism and how well you handle the issue. So we get a lot of credit for the outstanding work that you do. I want to give a little shout-out to a couple of other people that, again, are employed by Cal Fire that have come close to a number of us, and that's Charles Essling, the lead CERT instructor, and Thomas Elridge, the CERT instructor, who worked closely with Brian Kepphardt in our code enforcement. They've done a fabulous job teaching the CERT training. The -- I've had the privilege of taking both the training and the renewal, and they are just terrific. And so again, another example of the wonderful work that you do and how you represent this community. So we can't say enough good things, and we wish you nothing but the best. Thank you.
Well, very good, Mayor. Thank you. In addition to these introductions, we also wanted to give you a quick presentation on the operations of your ladder truck, and Chief Coats is going to make that presentation. Thank you.
So good afternoon. I want to present the Cove community's ladder truck, which is the new ladder truck built in 2020, and it's housed at Station 33 in Palm Desert, which is the station next to the mall there. So Ladder 33 is a ladder truck, is a 2020 KME TDA ladder truck, has 101 vertical reach. That means that when the ladder is fully extended and you see the ladder on top of the truck there, it reaches 101 feet. And we have some of those obstacles here in the city of Rancho Mirage and surrounding areas where we need that capability. It's 57 feet overall in length, and it does have two steering wheels. And why do we need two steering wheels for something that large? Well, it's because we have some tight areas where we need to be able to maneuver that ladder truck. We have a steering wheel in the front, in the cab, and then the tiller box in the rear. You see it kind of propped up in the back. So a firefighter sits back there and is able to steer the back wheels to make it more maneuverable. So it's 74,000 pounds in weight, and the passenger compartment consists of airbags, which allows a smoother, more comfortable ride to the firefighters within. So some of the specs for the ladder truck, it's powered by a 600 horsepower Cummins diesel engine. It makes it more fuel-efficient. 65 gallons of diesel, that's 15 gallons more than the previous ladder truck, and that's beneficial for us so we don't have to spend so much time filling up the fire truck or the ladder truck. We could spend more time responding to emergencies and training and station duties. Also has a 10,000-watt generator, and we could use that for lighting. And as you can see, the lighting package also consists of the ladder, which you see there illuminated, which provides firefighter safety and visibility. So some of the other specs that we have is a clean cab concept. We don't like -- we don't want our firefighters to store their turnout gear within the ladder truck itself. It helps for the longevity and the health of the firefighters within. And with the -- has also has high-angle attachment points, and with that, have the ability to take or pick people off of tall buildings, rescue people off of tall buildings or trees, and also has the engineer, as you see on the right, has a screen, which allows them to be able to properly and safely, efficiently place the ladder where it is needed. Has 500 cubic feet of compartment storage, which is larger than the previous ladder truck. We could carry more of our specialized rescue equipment, which includes the Jaws of Life, which we could utilize for any type of auto extrication. Also has 260 feet of ground ladders, and you see that there within the back of the ladder truck. And then you see the aerial ladder in action there, which we could utilize to get to high So some of the truck uses, we have elevator rescues, which we have quite a few elevators here in the city of Rancho Mirage, vertical ventilation, search and rescue, water salvage, technical rescues. Also, we have -- we utilize the ladder truck up Highway 74. We have quite a few calls up there with vehicles going over the side, so that's a huge assessment for our -- excuse me, a huge benefit for us to have that ladder truck available. So some of the remaining pictures that we have here is on the left, you see the ladder truck stored at the Station 33. The lower right, you can see how the wheels kind of pivot off to the right to make it more maneuverable. And then again, the ladder in action with the -- to go to an extended or elevated platform for ease and service. So the new ladder truck with the -- with extending that ladder, we could put that up in about 60 seconds. So it could be put up pretty quick. So with that, that's my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Well, thank you very much. Very complete. It's exciting, and it's wonderful that we have the capability of that truck in the city. So thank you again, Chief, for the excellent explanation. Anybody have any other questions for the Chief?
Chief, one brief question. You said that the unit is used on Highway 74 a lot?
Yes, sir.
For what purpose is it used?
So if we have a vehicle that goes over the side, which happens quite often, we have technical rescue equipment within the ladder truck. We have ropes, rigging, to be able to get a firefighter down to the car that has gone over Highway 74 and be able to safely and efficiently package the patient up and bring them back up to the roadside.
Great. More than just putting out fires, no doubt.
Correct. Multiple uses. We like to call it a toolbox. So it has quite a few tools within, and we have very qualified and capable people manning the call.
We support you all. You guys do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Again, Chief, thank you so much. Thank you both for being here. We wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to non-agenda council public comments. Kristi, are you holding any requests?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Do you see anybody from the public requesting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Brad Anderson. Go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon. My name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage. And just a little housekeeping I wanted to mention, that prior City Council meeting, the one before the last council meeting, there was some discussion concerning the Frank Sinatra Bridge project that was being hopefully eliminated or delayed. I just wanted just to remind everybody in the city, this was a first team effort from the City Council and the City Manager to have that project go forward before that last meeting. But I'm thankful that it has been seized, and of course, the City Manager or City Mayor, you know, mentioned that it would be a big expenditure from the city reserves, which it would have been. But also, I would remind everybody that there's a car dealership going in where funds were used and other aspects of the Great Plate, and I doubt the city was reimbursed with the Great Plate's money from the federal government yet, FEMA, I believe. But that, I may be misunderstood there, too, and other aspects of city funds being expended to private organizations. So I don't want to beat up on you too bad, but I just wanted to emphasize that maybe a little more inside information might be the best way to go in the future. And that's concerning a special meeting that was held today of the City Council, which was before the day's meeting, and a lot of people may not even be aware of that, but definitely look for that. It's concerning the Tourism Board and its commitment to the city and the city's commitment to its organization, too. And I want to talk about a lesson stuff, but I'm not going to. I'm going to wait on that because I got some bombshells. But anyway, I'll mention that later, and thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any non-agenda public comments that did not turn in a form? Seeing none?
We do have one more speaker remotely, Katie Stice.
Okay. Please go ahead.
We can't hear you yet, Katie.
Yes.
Just one moment. Jason, are you able to get Katie on?
Trying to work her for right now.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, perhaps Katie's the last speaker, so perhaps we can move on with council member comments and then come back and see if we can get Katie.
Sure. Whenever she's available, we'll work that in.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. In the meantime, we will then transition to council board member comments. I'll start with Iris. Do you have any?
Well, I just have one small comment, and it is a show and tell because, in case people are not aware of it, we are now in operation with our In-N-Out Burger, and everyone is thrilled that I've spoken to. We've gotten lots of compliments. People can't be more pleased with the professionalism and the speed with which they're getting their food. But I also wanted to make one comment about something very serious that they are on a campaign to handle, and that is human trafficking. And they have signs out in front that if you wish to make a contribution, they will match your contribution by three times. So if that's something you're interested in and you would like to make a contribution to In-N-Out, they would be most thrilled, and they will be thrilled to match your contribution times three. So enjoy yourself, enjoy the hamburgers and french fries, and just stay healthy, and I wish you all the best. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. Thank you. Desert Theatrical brings pure entertainment to the Rancho Mirage Amphitheater once again with a fantastic lineup for the 2022 season. Tickets are on sale now for three fabulous upcoming shows with a dinner theater option. Mamma Mia is the first up on February the 18th and 19th. The musical features hits of the widely popular 70s Swedish pop dance group ABBA and a romantic story that is. Enjoy the songs and the dances of this ever-popular production. Sorry to say, although the dinner show tickets for this performance are sold out, however, general admission seats are still available for purchase. Moving on to on March 18th and 19th, we'll have some sharp shooting at Buffalo Bill's Wild West Show with Annie Oakley and Frank Butler in the classic Irving Berlin's musical, Annie Gets Your Gun. Dinner theater and general admission seats are available for both performances. If you haven't seen the hysterical, long-running musical comedy, which is the third in the series, A Funny Thing Happened on the Way to the Forum, you are in for a great treat. Dinner theater and general admission seats are available for the April 15th and 16th show. Gates open at 5:30 p.m., and these performances begin at 7:30. Dinner theater ticket holders will enjoy waiter-served meals at Dinner theater ticket holders will enjoy waiter-served meals at the reserved tables in the first three tiers of the amphitheater, provided by Aqua California Bistro. General admission ticket holders can purchase food from Taka Tacos or Aqua California Bistro. Beverages will be available for purchase, provided by Aqua California Bistro and an onsite bar. General admission, open seating and advance tickets are $50 plus a processing fee. General admission tickets can also be purchased at the door for $55 if seats are available. Reserved dinner theater seating prices are $115 per seat for tables of four or six plus a processing fee. If you're a Rancho Mirage resident, you will receive a 15% discount, a 15% discount on general admission tickets. Tickets must be purchased at the Rancho Mirage Library. Proof of residency is required. And if you have any questions for further information, stuff I haven't covered, please call area code 760-620-5993. That is 760-620-5993. Or email info@deserttheatricals.com. I hope to see all of you out there enjoying these wonderful entertaining productions and taking advantage of our beautiful amphitheater in our gorgeous weather. Our amphitheater is the Hollywood Bowl, right here in the middle of Coachella Valley. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. And again, I appreciate you using my Hollywood Bowl line. Charlie is the major plagiarist of all time. And he does it with a smile, so how can you not applaud? Richard, if you would, please.
Thank you. Charlie, we love you. That's okay, don't worry.
Thank you, Richard, for sticking up for me. He's always picking on me.
Thanks, Mayor. We have some exciting update on our parks and trails. The Wolfson Park Expansion Project is nearing completion and construction is scheduled to commence in, in the spring of 2022. Wolfson Park is located at the intersection of Deval Drive and Frank Sinatra Drive. At the commission's request, staff installed a sign at the entrance to the park, and this has really gotten everybody excited because it goes into the details of what's happening in the park expansion. We have many hikes, hikers in the area and they enjoy the, the various trails around. With the cooperation of the Friends of the Desert Mountains, there are guided to several of the trails that are the more accessible in the area. The guided trails in Rancho Mirage are the Chukawala Trail, Glicks's Park, Big Horn Outlook, and Jack Rabbit Trail. For more information and to sign up, visit www-desertmountaintrail.org calendar. So they're open all day. Obviously, you can get some great trails up and behind Rancho Mirage, and there's some good leadership there too. So get out and enjoy our city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Richard. And now Steve Downs, our newest member of the city council, and his first council comments at the board meeting. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, thank you, Ted. Yes, I do have some comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the December 16th special council meeting, when council interviewed candidates, I said that whoever might be appointed to fulfill the balance of Dana Hobart's term would stand in the shadow of a giant. And I now occupy this chair and I'm mindful of a couple of issues that are important to me. First, I'm mindful that there is no replacement for Dana Hobart. Dana is truly a legend in the lore of this city. And I'm also mindful that while I am a, a poor replacement, I, I do have an obligation to him and an obligation to the four of you who appointed me. And that, of course, is the obligation to do the best job that I can for the people of this city and to always bear in mind a guiding principle on every decision I make and every vote that I cast, which is to do so in the best interest of this city and the, and the best interest of the future of this city. One other comment that I wanted to make is that we also are obligated as citizens of the globe to do what we can to stem the spread of this miserable pandemic. And if we all took the advice a little more each day of our health professionals and did a little more social distancing and wearing masks and hand washing, we might be able to reduce the death count in the future from this pandemic. And so if we thought about wearing a mask not as an impediment, but as a way to save lives in the future, maybe it might be easier for us to wear the mask now and then. And if people like Martin Luther King or, or Mother Teresa were alive today, as would any of the history's great humanitarians, you can bet that they would be showing the example for all of us, they would be wearing a mask today to save a life tomorrow. And the last thing that I wanted to talk about on a lighter note is what Iris had mentioned, which is the In-N-Out. Thanks for wearing that hat, Iris. That was, that was cool. I liked that. So like, like our city, our city manager and our mayor, who went to In-N-Out on the Friday that it opened, I too went on that Friday. Now, I didn't go in the restaurant. What I did is I went through the drive-through because I wanted to get a firsthand feel for what traffic would be like on that day in that shopping center. And to be sure, that drive-through line was fairly long, but it was contained in the shopping center. It took me about 25 minutes to work my way through the line and, and get my lunch. Now, what I observed that day is that In-N-Out did exactly what they said they would do. That drive-through lane was confined to the shopping center, traffic flowed smoothly in that shopping center, and I did not witness any evidence of traffic stacking or traffic impediment on the adjacent roadways. And I've made it a point to go through the shopping center several times since at several different hours during the day. And I have never witnessed any issue of traffic problem in or around that shopping center. So thank you to In-N-Out for standing up to their promise to, to protect us with respect to traffic control. And by the way, the double double that I had for lunch that day was pretty darn good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. And you made a contribution regarding In-N-Out as your position on the planning commission previously. So welcome. And I know your inauguration on the city council is already seamless and you're correct, Dana Hobart is a irreplaceable force, but you will do just fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ted.
I'll conclude by saying that, one last thing, that on January 27th, 1945, the Auschwitz, the largest concentration and death camp, was liberated by the Russian Red Army. Of the 1.3 million individuals, basically Jewish individuals sent to Auschwitz, 1.1 million died. This January, there is a remembrance at the Palm Desert Civic Park at 1:00 PM, where myself and the mayor of Palm Desert and Palm Springs will also be speaking. It's a day sadly that, an atrocity that we never want to forget. So I, I mention that for any of you that are out and about. If you want to pay homage, it will be on January 27. That concludes my comments. I believe that concludes our council comments, and I will now go to the city manager comments, if he has any.
I do, Mr. Mayor, but I understand that Katie Stice is now here and available, so I would like to take her non-agenda public comment at this time.
Sure.
If you're okay with that.
That'd be great.
Katie, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Perfect. Mayor Wiles, council members, city staff, guests in attendance and virtually. My name is Katie Stice, CEO at the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to take a moment to wish everyone a healthy and Happy New Year and give a formal welcome to our new council member, Steve Downs. It was a pleasure to have you attend today's chamber board meeting virtually. Thank you to Mayor Wiles, Mayor Pro Tem Townsend for introducing him at that meeting. I'd also like to extend a thank you to Lieutenant Wilson for all of his care to the community, a welcome to Lieutenant Myers, and special thanks to our fire department as well, and have a great Chamber of Commerce Day, Rancho Mirage. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie, very much. You're, you're a wonder. We cannot say enough about the contribution that the chamber makes to the city of Rancho Mirage, to the support of the businesses. It was a great meeting this morning. I'm glad we had the opportunity to introduce Councilmember Downs and once again to meet all of the, the board members. So thank you so much. I'll now go back to you, Mr. City Manager, for any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two comments from me today. The first one is I just wanted to acknowledge and thank city staff, who throughout this pandemic have figured out a way to continue the city operations and be available to the public, so that continues. City Hall currently is still by appointment only. That will run through next week as well. But city staff is doing everything they can to help people remotely, and I just appreciate all their efforts in being flexible and still serving our community during these difficult times. So thank you to all the city staff. The next item that I have, share my screen. So I'd like to recognize someone that we all depend on greatly. So I wanted to congratulate our Director of Information Services, Jason Hadigay. Jason was selected by the InfoTech Research Group for the 2021 CIO Award for the Small Business Division. This is a very hard award to get. Many people qualify for it. Our level of government fits in this division along with other businesses. And as we all know and have seen, Jason does a great job for our city, not only in keeping up with what we need to do to keep the city network safe and secure, but also many of our projects, we've had many other cities and special districts come in to see what Jason has put in place when it comes to how we run our servers, how we do our backups, how we secure our data, and some of the security protocols that Jason has in place. He's done previous presentations for the city council that shows how often the city's network is attempted to be breached. And as we see in the newspaper more and more, local government is becoming a huge target for hackers and ransomware, whereby they come in and basically shut you down and demand payment in order to get your system back. So Jason has been working on this for years and protecting our city, and he does a great job for us. So this award is definitely well deserved, Jason. So thank you for everything you've done for the city of Rancho Mirage. Jason has over 20 years of governmental service. He's an expert in this field. He's recognized by many of his colleagues for being an expert, and I know he's a resource for quite a few people in other cities that are around us. So Jason, congratulations on receiving this award. It's definitely well deserved. And there's a picture of Jason when he was picked as Employee of the Year within Mayor Kite. So Jason, congratulations. And that's all I have today.
Does that conclude the comments?
Yes, that's all I have today.
All right, thank you. The next item of business will be the minutes of December 16th. If there are no additions or subtractions, alterations to the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval of the December 16th council minutes?
There's, there's a motion and a second?
And a second.
And there's a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Downs?
Christie, is it appropriate that I vote, since I did not sit in on the entire meeting? The last time I was only appointed for the last few minutes of that?
You can still vote on this.
Okay, all right. Yes, approved.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wiles?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Next item of business is the consent calendar, and if you will, Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. You have eight items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt ordinance number 1192, second reading, levying special taxes within City of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number Five. This relates to the Section 31 project. Item number three is to adopt Joint Resolution Number, next in order, making findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, as amended by Assembly Bill 361, and authorizing continued remote teleconference meetings of the city council and all affiliated agencies and all other city-affiliated Brown Act bodies in accordance with AB 361 during the current state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Item number four is to adopt Resolution Number 2022, next in order, authorizing the submittal of applications for all CalRecycle payment programs and related authorizations for which the city of Rancho Mirage is eligible. This resolution allows us to submit for grants through CalRecycle. Item number five is the final acceptance of the Tamaris Neighborhood Pavement Rehabilitation City Project CP 19348. Item number six is the receive and file of the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2021, and other related audit reports. Item number seven are contracts, and item number eight are demands. Before we go to council questions or comments, we will open up the public comment period on the consent calendar. If any member of the public would like to speak on one of these items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Christie, will you do the in-person public comment, please?
Yes, I have no speaker cards. Does anyone here in person wish to speak on the consent calendar? No one wishes to speak on the consent calendar.
Okay, we do have someone on the remote audience, and Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Hi, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. Want to speak on consent counter item number three, and that's the continuation of aspects of AB 3, I'm sorry, I'm reading it the way I wrote it. But anyway, the continuous of AB 361 to really conduct remote meetings. I'm, I'm opposed to this, and the reason is not for the public aspect, but for the, for the sitting city council, elected officials. They should make themselves available. If social distancing is the narrative, which it is, it doesn't make sense that part of the city council would be in attendance and part would not be because the venues, they're the same. So it's either safe or it's not safe. So I'm, I'm concerned that this aspect, AB 361 is really being abused by many of the city councils within the state, and, and it appears that Rancho Mirage is doing the same. So, and, and again, the narrative is social distancing, it's not mask. I heard a council member messing about mask, and, and, and that's not the aspect of this AB 361. So I'm opposed to this, and, and I will be until you do not establish it any further. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comment.
We have no other speakers, Mr. Mayor, so we'll close the public comment period on the consent calendar, and I will return this to you and the council.
Thank you, Isaiah. Is there anybody on the council that would like to make any comments regarding the consent calendar? I see none. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I will make a motion to accept the consent calendar as read.
Second.
And I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second roll call, please. Kristi?
Councilmember Downs?
Approved.
Councilmember Kite?
Approved.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Approved.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item will be an action item, and that will be handled by Ryan Stendell, our Director of Public Works, and that involves the initiation of a general street vacation proceedings for a 30-foot easement positioned on a portion of property located at 39-125 Vista Dunes Road. Ryan, if you would, please.
Well, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. Sounds like the mayor just gave my staff report. And in all honesty, staff has received a request from the owner of 39125 Vista Dunes Road to vacate a 30-foot access easement that runs the width of his property. Staff has investigated the request and concurs with the property owner that this access easement is no longer necessary. It was dedicated to the city back in 1973, and in today's condition, is not necessary anymore. Via the staff report and attached resolution, staff is recommending approval of beginning that vacation process. You have my staff report, supporting documents, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Is there any financial impact to the city of Rancho Mirage?
No, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Ryan. We'll go ahead and open up the public comment period on this item. If any member of the public wishes to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. If you're participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Kristi, will you please do the in-person audience?
Yes, I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? And there is no one.
Okay, we don't have anyone on our remote audience, so we'll close the public comment period, and I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the council that would like to make any comment on this item?
I have a question, if I may?
Yes, please, Steve.
So, Ryan, if I understand this correctly, this would have been a 30-foot wide easement for a city street that is not needed, and that's the reason for vacating this easement?
Correct. You would have had 30 feet on this property and 30 feet on the property to the north. If you look at how the area has developed in the real world, there are some houses that would make a road in this area literally impossible to build. And so, staff is recommending that it's not needed, one, and two, that we could begin the vacation process.
I'm looking at the photo on page 15 of Section 9, and it looks like that easement runs behind three different parcels. Are we vacating the easement on all three parcels or only one?
With this action this afternoon, it's on just the one parcel. I would make the caveat that staff would be favorable to the vacation process on all three. However, various property owners may care that it's there or may not, depending on how their property is being developed. If you're not putting a structure there, there's really no impact. In this case, the property owner has some development plans that would require that easement to be gone.
Got it. So, it's up to the other property owners to request a vacation of the easement if they choose to do so?
Absolutely.
Understand, thank you.
Yeah, and just to add to that, there are some legal requirements for the property owner. So, this property that we're talking about today recently sold, and so the new property owner is requesting that it be removed. They have to provide legal descriptions and survey reports and things like that to the city, which does cost money. So, if those other property owners wanted to come through and follow the same process, they absolutely could, but it's not as easy as just a request. They have to go put together the necessary reports for the city.
Thank you, Isaiah. Are there any other council comments? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve item nine.
I'll make a motion to the city council, adopt Resolution Number 2022, next in order, similar vacating approximately 9.230 square feet of access right-of-way, located approximately 300 feet north of Halcó Dunes and Vista Dunes intersection, and running approximately 315 feet westward of Vista Dunes.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Kristi, roll call, please.
Councilmember Downs?
Approved.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item will be consideration of a memorandum of understanding with Curative for COVID-19 testing. Gabe Coddin, our Director of Marketing, will handle that. Gabe, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Today, if the city council desires to bring back a COVID-19 testing site at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory, then they must authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding, the MOU attached to the staff report. Curative, who previously administered the COVID-19 testing site, has provided this draft, and has estimated it would be open within about three weeks of an executed agreement. Staff anticipates costs of about $5,000 per month, and this includes the tops and barricades, electronic signage, and any equipment rental to properly administrate that site off the Highway 111 corridor. Curative currently administers COVID-19 testing sites in La Quinta, Indio, Palm Desert, Cathedral City, also has mobile ones that visit weekly in Palm Springs and Coachella. Library staff had recently compiled a list of all the Coachella Valley testing sites for patrons and callers inquiring about available COVID-19 testing, and that list is also attached to the staff report. It's also worth noting that yesterday, the federal government offered free at-home testing kits for per-family, and those can be requested at covidtest.gov. So, that's the information I have, and concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you, Gabe. Kristi, are you holding any request for comment on this item?
No, I have no speaker cards.
If any member of the public that has participated remotely wishes to speak on this item, raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Hi, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I'm opposed to this, again, being in that location, especially being so far down from the testing aspects, not debunking the testing, but there are reported flaws with this type of test. And I would hope that the city would not involve themselves in this type of passion, I guess, because there are other testing locations, and we have a hospital within the city boundaries that could easily accommodate this. And I understand there will be costs to the city in Sineesh, which is the last testing location. I noticed the signs were put in the medians, and it's quite a distraction, I think, for the drivers, especially on that corner. So, that's an aspect, safety, of course. So, I think this is not something the city wants to accommodate, especially in that location. I mean, there was talk about In-N-Out, maybe over there, people would see it. Maybe that's a good thing. So, yeah, I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
We have no other speakers, Mr. Mayor, so we'll close the public comment period, and I'll turn this over to you and the council.
Thank you. Is there any comments on the city council? Yes, Richard?
In reading the staff report, it looked like there are 29 sites that are currently available in the five cities surrounding Rancho Mirage. Of those 29, I think only three of them required the individual pay for that test. Is this something that we're going to see in the future where fewer and fewer actually charge the fee? Now, with this government offer yesterday about free testing at home, is that going to eliminate the need for this kind of an external test?
There hasn't been any information published about that, whether the free testing sites would start to diminish or not. There hasn't been any relative information to that of whether the free testing is going to go away at this point or not.
Looking at the list of those participants, is there some reason that the health facilities like Eisenhower are not on the list?
The testing site at Eisenhower is for their purposes. So, if you're going to the hospital for some procedure or something along those lines, if you're an established patient with Eisenhower and you need a COVID test, it's not convenient. It's not like the library site used to be, that was just generally open to the public. Eisenhower doesn't have the staff or the quantities of tests to be able to do it for everybody, and so they reserve what they get allocated for really their purposes and their patients. So, you know, this potential site at the library would operate much like the last one, where it's generally available, well, it is available to everyone as long as they have an appointment.
Is there a minimum number of days that we have to have this contract if we approve it?
The question was minimum number of time, timeframe?
Right.
They're proposing July, reassess in July. So, this would run from, if it was approved, it would run through middle of July and then get reassessed based upon demand. The previous agreement was always, we could mutually agree if demand wasn't there, we could discontinue it within a couple of weeks. So, there was a mutual agreement in the last agreement that if there isn't the demand and it doesn't make sense for either party, that either party, we could cancel it.
And the best guess as far as the cost during that period of time would be $5,000 per month?
Yeah, last time, because with that getting so busy and in season, we want to have the electronic signs on the medians right on that portion of Highway 111. You also want the cones, because the library is open, even though it's in to-go model. So, you're going to have patrons mingling with test takers. So, you want to have really good signage, you want to have cones, and we rented those last time. So, costs were somewhere between $4,000 and $5,000 a month for the costs of that.
Is staff recommending approval?
Staff's just presenting the information to council at this point, and they can entertain a motion.
Yeah, I think, you know, from a staff perspective, we feel like this is more of a policy-level decision. Where is this something that the council feels like, is this a service that the council wants to provide to our community? So, we can absolutely implement it based on that policy decision, but there's no formal recommendation from the staff, because we feel like it's more of a policy-level decision for the council, and we're ready to act on whatever the council decides.
Okay, I have a question for Gabe. Since so many of our residents had had problems making appointments to get tested, and now that people are going to be getting tests delivered to their homes, and now that we see that La Quinta and Indio and Palm Desert and Cathedral City also have testing places and that there's a mobile van that's available to visit sites, is there any chance that we could, instead of having something like this as a formal presentation location, could we have a van that would come to our library or another designated place maybe once or twice a week for the Rancho Mirage residents? Since we have no other locations in Rancho Mirage that seem to be available for testing, could we bring in the van and have our Rancho Mirage residents make use of that van by appointment or as a walk-in?
Yeah, council member, I think anything would be possible. I think the thing to note would be, the biggest, the Curative in any testing site had said staffing is the biggest issue. So, regardless of what concept you went with, you're three weeks out. So, I think you could argue or you could make a case for, will the demand be there in three weeks from now? Because right now, you can get appointments fairly easy as of right now. Right after the holidays, they became pretty compressed, and it was a lot harder, but they are getting easier. You go on the Curative website right now for Palm Desert, and there's hundreds of appointments available just over at the UCR campus. So, yeah, the earliest they could go to market would be three weeks from today, if approved.
Okay. So, there, we can't get on a list where if we desire at a later date, maybe we could have a van come to a location for people that are unable to travel to the other locations?
Yeah, I don't know the availability of their mobile stations. I didn't inquire about that, but we could certainly follow up with that and bring that back at a later date.
Very good. Gabe, I'm looking here as the request, it says action as deemed necessary. So, it seems to me like down the road, if this is necessary, that staff would come back and ask for the installation again to be placed at the library. But as what Iris is saying and what I'm reading also, it seems like there's enough out there at this particular time to meet all the needs to have testing sites available and not necessary for us to have this. That's my take.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In regard to Iris's comments about location in Rancho Mirage, there are actually five sites listed on the summary that staff has prepared, all the way from CVS to Walgreens. And so, there seems to be plenty of availability. And I think with the initiation of the four free tests at home, those people that were driving around looking for something in the past now can do it from their own home. So, I don't think it's necessarily something that's required at this time, but I think if we evaluate the need going forward, we can make that judgment as to how the impact of the four frees was. And I had a test at Eisenhower, and it was next day. So, for the people who want instant testing, maybe the existing program is okay. For those who will go over a day or two, it doesn't seem to be a whole lot of problems.
I'm hearing the mood of the council is to possibly table this item and take a look at it again at another council meeting in view of the fact that testing kits have just been sent out yesterday. A number of homes are going to be receiving them now over the course of the next few weeks, along with the additional sites. It may not be necessary, and we can take another look at this, either at the next council meeting or two council meetings from now. Is that what I'm hearing from most of you?
Yes, and I would second that, Mr. Mayor.
If I may, I was one of the council members who did suggest to Isaiah that we look into this, and I can tell you that a reason that I did that a couple of weeks ago is personal experience. At my house, COVID did visit, and my wife suffered from it for a week or so. Fortunately, she's negative now. But I can tell you that at the time, it was remarkably difficult to find a place to get a test. I did manage at one point about two weeks ago to get scheduled for a test at the site at the Westfield. I guess it's not the Westfield Mall anymore, but you know where I mean. And so, they did schedule me. When I got there, the car drive-through testing site was closed because they had so many people who had signed up for tests that they couldn't accommodate the cars in the parking lot. So, you had to get out of your car, stand in line. I got in line, and I asked the first person who walked by me, who had just been tested, how long it took. Two and a half hours. So, I got out of that line and found some other way to accomplish the test a couple of days later. But in any event, things are unfolding rapidly. It does seem as though that there is more availability of tests today, but certainly as recently as a couple of weeks ago, it was extremely difficult to arrange for a test. So, I do think we need to have an open mind about this, but I'm certainly willing to carry it forward to the next council meeting. We just need to be sensitive to changes in the way things unfold here.
Okay, and if I can just tag on to what Steve has said, because I have my own experience, and I know Richard mentioned about the different farm- and I know Richard mentioned about the different pharmacies, but if you wait in line in a pharmacy, I waited 45 minutes just to get a prescription, not even realizing how long it was taking all the cars in front of me, which was only four cars, to go through with their test. Sometimes they can't open the bottle, sometimes they're having difficulty understanding what needs to be done. But now that things are a lot more readily available, it seems, I would go along with putting this on a back burner and tabling the matter if we do find that we have problems with people getting tested when they need to be, and we can vote on it at another time if it is required.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, I was just getting to that. There is a motion on the floor to table this to the next meeting. We can take a look at it, see if the situation has improved, and if it has not improved and/or has gotten worse, we can always then contract with curative. So Charlie has made a motion. Is there a second? Richard, a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Downs?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, and we'll take a look at that. Obviously, if we feel there's a need, we're certainly going to be the very first to address that need. The next item is the appointment of a city council member to the Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival Board. Isaiah, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have two council members that also serve on the Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival Board. One of those council members was Dana Hopeart, so upon his resignation from the council, there is now a council vacancy on the Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival Board. Jamie Kabler, the Writers' Festival founder and the guy that makes it all happen, he respectfully requests that Mayor Ted Wile be appointed to the Writers' Festival Board. With that, that concludes my staff report, and before we move to the council, we can open up the public comment if any member of the public would like to speak on this item. Now is the time to do so. If you're participating remotely, you would use the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. And Kristi, I'll let you do any in-person comments.
Okay, I have no speaker cards on this item. Anyone in the audience wish to speak? And there is no one.
All right, we have no one on our remote audience, so we'll close the public comment period for this item, and I'll turn this back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Isaiah, is there anybody on the council that would like to make any comments?
Ted, is this a one-year appointment?
Yes.
Who is our other council member who is a, who is on the board? There are two council members.
Iris is on the board.
Iris, okay.
And let me just say that I, Dana and I have both been on that board since inception. So if this is going to be a one-year position, then that changes that aspect of it.
So these appointments are in place until they're changed by the council?
Okay.
So if the council, whoever the council appoints today, they would be on the Writers' Festival Board until that is changed by the city council.
Okay, great. I just wanted to clarify that, how it has been in the past.
Are there any other council comments?
Well, I will say they think that Mr. Wile would make a good addition to the Writers' Festival Board.
I will say I have been on, I've been a dues-paying member of that since the very start. Thank you, okay, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, I will make that motion that the library board, city council nominate and appoint a Mayor Ted Wile to the Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival Board.
I'll second.
And I'll second, Ben.
There's a motion and a second roll call, please, Kristi.
Councilmember Downs?
Approved.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. That concludes the formal part of our meeting, and our erstwhile city attorney is now visible on the screen to familiarize ourselves with those items being covered in the closed session. If you would, Steve.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. The council is now going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9D1 regarding existing litigation known as Vacation Rentals, Rental Owners and Neighbors of Rancho Mirage, Rancho Mirage Vacation Rentals LLC et al. versus City of Rancho Mirage. The council will also confer of legal counsel pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9D4 regarding one potential initiation of litigation item. And those are the only two items we'll be discussing in closed session. So I'll see you on the other side.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. We will now recess into closed session.
It's 3:30, and the city council took no reportable action in closed session. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.